It was crazy.
We got a person here, we got a person?
She's here, she's here, she's walked over to the water authority.
We're trying to just, just strain the meat.
Wait till he sits down.
Mm mm, it was very weird.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning and welcome to the February 12th, 2025 Spalding County Board of Commissioners' special call meeting on our public hearing regarding House Bill 581. The time is 10 a.m. I would ask that everybody please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. I would ask Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Bolden to lead us in the pledge of the flag at this time.
Please join me in prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Father, we humbly come before you today as citizens of Spalding County seeking to better understand and better know thy will here in this county. Father, we ask thee to please bless us with thy Spirit that it will reside here, that this meeting will be one of mutual understanding, that we can together work for what's best for Spalding County and the citizens thereof. Father, we ask a blessing this morning in the rain on all those that are sick and afflicted. Father, if you could, please be with all of our first responders, be with those that are having to travel out and about in this weather. Father, be with those that are stationed abroad, that they too will be able to return home to their families at the end of their times. Father, we ask these blessings humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you would, please join me in a pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. I want to make sure this is public hearings, so our first public hearing on House Bill 581. You may know that the Board of Education has had their three public hearings that are, as they are required, to make a decision to stay in or stay out, opt in or opt out. The way we want to try to do this, this morning, for all of us, this is an education for the commissioners as well as citizens. How, how we've got it structured this morning is that our great county manager will give us an overview first of what the law says. And in there, we'll be able to take a look and see what really and truly the law says about it and what we kind of voted on at the same time, I hope. Then I've asked the vice chair, Commissioner Dutton, to talk about it from his perspective as where we are right now, how he sees it as an example of one of, one of us commissioners. And then I'm gonna go back to Dr. Ledbetter and have him walk through the technical side of how we see this 581 operationally coming about with us. That will take us a few minutes for us to be able to understand that. And then we will go into the opportunity for citizen comments. The citizen comments are really important to us. We want to hear what citizens have to say about this bill and how it will affect us. We're well, we understand well that, how the citizens voted. So there's no issue on going over and over and over the vote that the citizens took. The issue is making sure that all the citizens understood what they voted for in the fewer sentences that were on the November election board. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Ledbetter to walk us through what the bill really says and not just a bunch of, hey, it says something like this. So you also know there is, while Dr. Ledbetter's getting set up, there is a number of cleanup bills on 581 floating in the General Assembly right now, but they have not passed, but they're trying to move through the General Assembly to change certain parts of that. But none of those have passed, so we have to take the bill the way it is right now. Dr. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to share just briefly what House Bill 581 denoted for the referendum that we voted on in November. I don't have the, here it is, thank you much. I'm hitting the down arrow. Thank you. Go ahead. You have to wait. All right, just briefly, the statewide floating homestead exemption, House Bill 581, affords us the opportunity as an exemption to reestablish the, the bottom part of our tax digest. And I'll talk more about that in just a few minutes with respect to the, the technical component. But it creates a floating homestead exemption for us. So the valuations of our homes will continue to increase as they have in years past to ensure that we are meeting that threshold that's denoted through our Department of Revenue. But the floating exemption that we will receive, should the Board make the decision to continue to stay into House Bill 581, would fluctuate year over year based on the CPI- U, the urbanization CPI component of, of the inflationary standards. The new local option sales tax under 581 affords the residents to vote in November, that would be the earliest that I believe that we could vote, for a floating local option sales tax that would add an additional penny at the register. And those funds would be used exclusively for the reduction of property taxes for our community. The third component that the House Bill 581 provides is a property tax procedural change. This bill that we voted on includes various procedural changes that afford us as taxpayers and homeowners, a tax assessment and appeals process that is different than the one that we currently, that we currently have in place. Additionally, there is a referendum process that places on, that was placed on the November 24 ballot through constitutional amendment, where the Georgia Assembly passed House Resolution 1022 during their legislative session of 2024, which proposes an amendment for local governments to opt out of House Bill 581. I, I think this is the first time that I can remember where there was ever a legislative option where the local jurisdictions were afforded the opportunity to opt out. But that was a component of this, this bill. But I want to read over, just for a second, what we voted on. So shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended so as to authorize the General Assembly to provide by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit increases in the assessed value of homesteads, but which any county, consolidated government, municipality, or local school system may opt out upon the completion of certain procedures? The procedures that were outlined require three public hearings, this being the first of three public hearings, the second will be this evening at 6 o'clock, and the third will be next Monday evening at 6 o'clock. This is not to suggest that the Board of Commissioners have made their minds up with respect to opting in or opting out. This is a requirement that should we opt out, should we agree that this is the best option for our community to opt out, that you have satisfied the requirements under state law. As you can see in the bottom right-hand portion of this slide, a yes vote supported providing for a local option homesteaded property tax exemption and allowing a county, municipality, or school system to opt out of the exemption. Those in favor were, of this amendment, were 18,857 or 60.32% of the voters voted in favor of this particular House Resolution 1022. As we get into further of the technical components of the, what we are understanding of this law, I, I think it will, will be very clear that it's not my intent to persuade, it is just my intent to provide factual information on what the bill actually presented at the November referendum. I, I would answer any questions that you may have with respect to just the technical component of the law.
I have one, Mr. Chairman. The, the FLOST, I'm a huge fan of sales taxes over any other kind of taxes. I think that's a fair way to tax people, it's an optional tax, and it catches illegal money, it catches visitor money, it's not just on the backs of people who, you know, want to own a house. And, and property taxes are, are the least fair way to do that. But the, the FLOST, it would be, so, we would have to collect that for the first year without actually doing a reduction, is that, is that right? Like the way that the?
That is correct, the way that, the training for this particular local option sales tax is, there has to be one year of collection before any funds can be used to offset any property tax.
So, how much would be collected in a FLOST in that year? Rough estimate? I mean, we've got, we've got.
Is that, is that in your technical part of your?
It would be in my technical component, but I will be more than happy to answer that question. So if we're using the same distribution percentages that we use with the City of Griffin currently for local option sales tax.
So we would have to split that with the City of Griffin?
That is correct.
Okay.
It would be roughly $8.2 million annually for the, the way it's currently split.
How, how many mills equivalent is that?
About 2.2, 2.1 and some change.
But the FLOST can't actually increase our total budget, right? So unlike the loss, like 80% of it has to go towards millage rate offset and 20% can go into a general fund. This, 100% of it has to go to millage rate offset.
That's correct.
So if an increase, or if the CPI said instead of getting $3 million, we only got $2 million or $1 million, this couldn't be used to offset that loss, it would, it would be a dollar for dollar for the budget, right?
That's correct. Correct.
Any other comments on the bill itself?
I, I don't, I don't know about everybody out there, but what y'all just said, I don't even, I don't even understand that.
You should, one, okay, go ahead.
I mean, the conversation that the two of you just had about this FLOST being dollar for dollar, I know if I'm confused about what you just said, everybody else has.
The, the dollar for dollar for FLOST would be how much the floating local option sales tax funds would offset the property tax in respect to the amount of millage rate that would be required to satisfy the revenue source. So that, that's a lot of technical term, and I don't mean for it to be that way, I was just answering questions. A lot of this will be explained during the technical portion of my presentation, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so what this law says basically to me is, if we opt out, we continue with the exact same tax process that we're doing right now.
That is correct, yes sir.
If we, if we stay in, we will go to a new process.
That is correct, yes sir.
Okay, okay. Anybody else has anything on the law itself? Understand?
It doesn't override current exemptions, though. So even if we went into it, whatever your current homestead exemption would remain.
That is my understanding, yes sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to have comments from commissioners, and I have specifically asked Commissioner Dutton to explain. The issue that I'm trying to get to with this is, first, you should know that the five commissioners have not made up their mind. I heard somebody walk up to me and say, I know you've already decided. We have not decided. The critical part of this is the listening sessions to what the citizens, you all, have to say to us about which way is better to go. So it's important to us, and it is a, to me, a listening session, and this is the best way we can do to get everybody to be able to tell us, hey, here's how we see it from your perspective, all right? Commissioner Dutton?
Well, does any other commissioner want to, how do you kind of comment first? So, we, we had a retreat earlier in the year, and we discussed this a lot, and again, I don't want to put words in everybody's mouths, but our general agreement was, we really don't want to increase millage rate. We want to continue the trend that we've had since I've been in office of rolling back the millage rate as much as we can each year. Like, no one wants to raise taxes. We all pay those taxes, we don't want to raise them, even on ourselves. That said, you know, even though we have been lowering them each year, the, the real trick to shifting the tax burden from residential homeowners, where like 94% of our taxes come from is, is residential property taxes, is to shift it onto industrial and commercial taxes. All the counties that have lower tax rates than us, Fayette County, Clayton County, they have a hu, significantly larger industrial and commercial basis. Peachtree City alone, just the city of Peachtree City, has significantly more of both than all of Spalding County. So why do they have lower taxes? Because they have giant industries paying those taxes instead of just homeowners like, like we have. But traditionally, Spalding County, you know, since, since the mills were here, has been focused on taxing housing. You know, back, way back when, the, the mill owners, you know, controlled everything, and they didn't want to be taxed, so it comes to focus on the, the residential. And we've been working really hard to, to shift that burden onto, like everyone else, onto industrial and commercial. But if you, if you notice, I mean, we've talked about this before, you go out 16, and it's a divided four-lane highway that they started working on in the 1960s as an employment and commercial corridor. Like, that's the whole point of this, that's why there's access roads on it. You know, from the, the Lakes at Green Valley Industrial Park, all the way to the border with Butts County, you know how much we collect in tax revenue from that each year? How much is it?
$98,000.
$98,000 total, from our industrial and employment corridor. That, that, that has to change, we have to do something about that. Why are we still paying so much taxes? Because since the 70s, we've just let that sit and do nothing. And that's not fair to us that own homes here. That, that's why, why are my taxes so high? Because we've got fallow fields over there not being developed as they should have been 50 years ago, okay? So, the, the level of service that the county provides, it is not dramatic. We don't have the level of service that, that Fayette County has, or Clayton County has, much less Fulton County or any of these bigger cities. But we, we do have a fairly low insurance rating, so our, our homeowner's insurance is, is fairly low compared to places like Pike County and Lamar County, which have a higher ISO because they don't have full-time firefighters, they don't have bucket trucks, that, you know, there's things that the insurance company's looking for. So we're providing those services here, but we also don't have, like, county police, we don't, there's, there's a bunch of services that counties, some counties provide that, that we don't. So our, our relative level of county services, it, it's about in the middle, it's about in the middle. You have some rural, rural counties that don't provide anything, don't even have a volunteer fire department, and then you have counties, you know, bigger, richer counties, Atlanta, Decatur, that, that have a, a lot more services. But every year, we don't do the, the, the budget first, federal government style, if you, if you don't spend it, you're, we're gonna cut your budget next year. We do a zero-based budget every single year. Every single department has to come in and sit where you're sitting and justify to us every single line of their budget. They start with zero in their budget, and they have to come and say, this is what we need, this is what we need to repair the roads, this is what we need for sheriff's deputies, this is what we need with the fire department, this is what we need for the parks. Every single year, they have to come back and we examine it every year. And they ask for a lot more than they get. They ask, boy, if we had new trucks, we could do this, that, and the other. We can't do that this year, we don't have the budget. Well, if I had the, you know, if we had more fire stations, our response times would be lower, we don't have that in the budget. So it's mostly a bunch of no's from up here, when our, when it's time to get the budget across. But on the other side, virtually no department uses their entire budget. So they have a plan for, well, we're gonna, you know, this is how much it's gonna cost to, to cut all the grass on the right-of-bays. And at the end of the year, or closer to the end, they go, hey, we're, we were able, that, the new tractor that we bought cut that cost significantly because it saved us a bunch of time with our employees, so it actually cost us a little less, here's that money back. And almost every department ha, you know, was able to hand money back so that we don't have to spend this, this full amount. But there are times when there, there are emergencies. We had the, the, the chiller on the sheriff's department in jail go out. What, what was that, like, $250,000? That was like an immediate, neat, like, that wasn't in the budget, holy crap. You know, same thing when the, the elevators in the courthouse broke. I, I want to say the, the, if I remember correctly, it was like $460,000 to fix these elevators. I mean, it was, you know, these things aren't in the, we didn't plan for elevators to break. So what I, what I'm trying to say is, if we, if we cut taxes, then we have to cut services, right? Like, we're, there, there isn't a lot of fat there. Now, every year, we say, please come and look at the budget, if anybody's eyes see something different than we're seeing, if you see somewhere to cut, please let us know. We're, we're looking for reasons and ways to cut and save money, hey, do it like this instead of doing it like this, great, that's a great idea. We've got five sets of eyes, six sets of eyes, seven sets, you know, I mean, as many as we've got, but we don't have as many as y'all have. So if you have ideas, if you have better idea, you know, please come to us. Several people came over the last couple of years and said, hey, we should close fire departments, I don't care if our fire response rate is 20 minutes. Well, I, you know, I'll, you know, maybe most people would disagree with that, I, I sort of think that's a bad idea, it would certainly cause our insurance rates to go up significantly more than what you would save in the cost of providing those firemen. You know, we've also had, you know, animal trainers come in, dog trainers come in and say, we should go from a no-kill shelter to a kill shelter, because killing the animals is much cheaper than trying to rehome them, and you go, well, I guess that's, you know, that's one opinion, I guess, I, I, I don't know if everyone shares that. So there's sort of a triangle. There's how much the residential tax burden is, what the services the county provides, and how much the industrial and commercial tax base is. So if we want to lower one of those, we, we have to either, if we want to lower the industrial taxes, I mean, the residential taxes, we have to either raise the industrial base or, or cut services. Now, we're doing everything we can to raise that industrial base. I mean, that's, look at the Lakes at Green Valley, it's, it's now full, Renai has a stage three ready to be built. Unfortunately, the Biden administration decided to ban all gas or fossil fuel-powered, even super green ones like Renai's, and so they've put that on hold, we hope that the Trump administration will reverse that, so that Renai can then build their phase three, which will employ over 1,000 people and generate a huge amount of, of tax revenue. And we hope that the Water Authority will be able to continue to expand water and sewage down 16, so that more of these companies can come in and take more of that burden off of us. As that's been happening over the last few years, we have continued to roll back that millage rate. The issue is, is our budget doesn't stay the same each year, okay? The, the cost to employ people goes up every single year, or, or they leave, right? You know, we, at one point, we were down 20 firefighters. Right now, each fire department only has two people who work there. If somebody calls out sick, we have to close a fire station. You, you hear what I'm saying, like, there's no margin, right? So we would love to have three people on duty at each fire station, but that's not in the budget. You see what I'm saying, like, so, every year, that, our total budget has to increase, our, our price of gas increases, the price of electricity increases, the price to keep these lights on, that increases at, at about a $3 million, two and a half, $3 million rate each year. Not to hire new people, not to expand services, not so there's more firefighters or more sheriff's deputies, just to maintain the current level of services, our total actual budget has to go up around 3 million a year. Look, blame the rich men north of Richmond, all right? They're the ones that have inflated and devalued our currency, and so the They're the ones that have inflated and devalued our currency, and so the actual amount of money that's hitting you guys, that inflation, i- is hitting us the same. So, if the, the increase, right, is capped, uh, even though we're rolling back the military, is capped at, say, one million a year, I still need three million dollars to pay my firefighters, to pay my sheriff's deputies, to pay the animal control, to pay code enforcement, to fix the roads, to, to do all the things that we're currently doing. Well, where do I get that two-million-dollar shortfall? Uh, until more industry comes online, that means a military increase, and no one wants that to happen. Nobody wants a military increase. And we've looked at the numbers a little bit, and I've, I've looked at this and said, well, i- if this caps the value that, you know, the taxable value increase, what kind of uh, uh, you know, expected budget increase were we gonna get? And it's around a million dollars, a million and a half dollars. Well, that's dependent on the CPI. That's with a CPI of two-and-a-half, three percent. Well, they've already decided what's the CPI change this year gonna be. Anybody guess what the rate of inflation is this year, that the state decided is the rate of inflation? Zero. There's no inflation this year, everybody. It went away magically, which is, of course, hogwash. That's hogwash. Of co- of course, there's inflation, all right? So, we, we look at the actual math, and we look at this aspirational bill. Hey, this sounds great on paper, but when you actually do the math, we go, in its, in its current form, i- it could be disastrous for Spalding County. Now, that said, I've been in contact with the bill writers of this bill in the State House and said, hey, we're, we've got a real problem here. We really want to go into this. This is a great idea for homeowners in the long run, but we don't want to have to raise the military or fire police officers, or, I mean, sheriff's deputies and firefighters. We, we don't want to have to cut, drastically cut back on county services. You know, there's, there's no margin. There isn't a third fired, firefighter to, to fire at any station. So, they said, well, there are changes that we hope to make. There is some local legislation that we could do. O- okay, great. We would love to see that. Please tell me. And in fact, the, one of the bill authors said, yeah, we can make this change and this change, and I go, boy, if those changes happen, then this, then this works great. Awesome. But then when we talked to legislative council, they go, no, those, that's not happening. That's not how it works. And I go, but wait a minute, uh, then that means we have a huge budget shortfall, and to make up for that, we would have to raise the military. And he goes, yeah, yeah, that's, that's how this works. Wait, so you've, you've created a bill that forces me to raise the military each year? Like, come on, guys. What are you, I mean, nobody wants to raise taxes. Come on. So, uh, a- again, we, no one wants to raise taxes. We want this to work out. We want our tax burdens to shift from our backs, we're all homeowners here, onto the backs of industrial and commercials. That, that's the whole point. Um, but in the current incarnation of the bill, in my current understanding of how it's currently works, it's gonna require almost a two-mill increase every year going forward. Every single year, it's gonna have to increase in order just to keep the same level of county services the, the same, which is ridiculous. Like, that, that, that doesn't make any sense. The math just doesn't work out. Now, it works better in Fayette, where they have this bigger industrial uh, uh, base. It works better in Clayton. It works better in Fulton. And that's who it's designed for. Uh, but here, as it's currently written, now again, we, we're working with the, the state, and we're saying, hey, we need this change and that change so that we can make this work. And they've given us positive signs. Our legislators have said, yeah, we would love to do that. Let us know what we need to do, and we've let them know. But currently, there's, there's no movement on those changes. And so, I, I, County Manager, Dr. Ledbetter, is gonna um go over the technical stuff, but at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that we don't have to raise the military. We want to lower residential taxes. We want to shift those onto industrial. But thi- this bill does the exact opposite of that. I- if this bill went into effect in the current way it works, it's gonna mean a two-mill increase every single year just to keep our current level of service the same, which is no one wants. Instead of lowering that military rate every year like we have, we would have to increase it two mills every year. I don't want to do that. None of us want to do that. But, you know, a lot of these bills are, are, are sort of better on paper. I've been, been sharing some unintended consequences um with other bills that have come out, um, uh, you know, in, in the last couple of years, both from the state and the federal level, and they, they sound good on paper. You know, the Inflation Reduction Act that spent four trillion dollars and devalued all of our money. Like, it sounds great, but in actuality, it's, it's, it's not. And so, without some, some changes to this bill, I, I, I don't see how this doesn't actually increase taxes. Now, the FLOST would help lower in the medium term because if it passed, it would have to be on our referendum in November. And then we, even though that would mean a increase in military rate next year, the year after that, it could mean a decrease, but then every year after that, it would continue to have to go up. So you'd get an increase, and then a slight decrease, and then an increase, and an increase, and increase i- in, you know, for forever. So, uh, w- we don't want that to happen. The county's really going in a good direction. Um, but I, the, the math's just not mathing on this one. Um, now, the state, the people that wrote the bill, we've pointed this out and said, hey, this isn't a one-size-fits-all. You know, uh, No Child Left Behind might have worked great in Texas, but it was a terrible failure in the rest of the country. Uh, and that's kind of where we at here. This works, this might work well in Fulton, but the math is not mathing for Spalding County just because of our traditional base that we're, again, trying to get away from. Um, and they said, okay, let us know the changes that we need to make. We've let them know. They're working on it. But we haven't, we haven't really heard positive results from that yet. Certainly haven't seen them. So, um, again, it's our goal to continue to lower property taxes, uh, continue to lower the military rate, continue to shift that burden onto the industrial and commercial. Um, but there, there's some real fundamental, I mean, just basic math-level issues with, with this bill. And we're trying to overcome them, but we haven't seen that yet. I missed anything.
Thank you. All right, other commissioners? Okay, uh, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
And second? Have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five-zero. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual members or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual members or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes, so say at the clock in just a little bit, to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the members during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend the rule. Uh, Dr. Ledbetter, do we have, uh, people signed up to speak today?
Yes, sir. We have, uh, seven neighbors who have signed up to speak this morning. Uh, Miss, Michelle DruGos. You would please state your name and address for the record, please.
Michelle DruGos, three-twelve Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Georgia, Sunsetty Peachtree. Good morning, commissioners. According to the Five-Year Digest, property taxes have increased for property owners in Spalding County for a total of forty-eight-point-six-seven percent over the last five years, with a seventeen-point-one-five percent increase in just twenty-twenty-two alone. In twenty-twenty-three, this board attempted a slight rollback from sixteen-point-one-three-eight to fifteen-point-five-eight-eight mills, but this still resulted in a nine-point-seven-one percent increase to the property owners. Nine-point-seven-one percent after a seventeen-point-one-five percent increase the prior year, and yet this board and the county manager would claim that the county had no money. Yet this past, this past budget, you had a supplemental budget that has been used as a wish list to make purchases outside of the original budget. In twenty-twenty-four, this board chose to keep the fifteen-point-five-eight-eight military rate, which resulted in a four-point-oh-five percent increase to the property owners. Property owners, your constituents, continue to show up to the public hearings and comment on the high cost of county and school taxes, which are hurting their finances, hurting their quality of life. Property owners who have owned their properties for forty years or more, and suddenly their assessments go up twelve percent, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, and even eighty-one percent, which was stated at the Board of Education public hearing yesterday by, for one man, his property. The reason HB five-eight-one was put on the twenty-twenty-four ballot was that our legislators recognized that across Georgia, assessments had increased exponentially, and the citizens were asking them for consistency in assessments. Representative Camp spoke at the Board of Education public hearing on January twenty-eighth, and she stated that the only way HB five-eight-one would make it through the State House and onto the ballot for the citizens to be able to vote was to add the opt-out feature. Statewide, the citizens have voted for HB five-eight-one to hold the property assessments to the rate of inflation. The citizens of Spalding County voted for HB five-eight-one. This board must respect their citizens and follow what the citizens have voted for. This board has other options, such as the FLOST, floating local option sales tack, which would act like the SPOST and is spread out and paid by every visitor to Spalding County. This is a more palatable solution to your quest for more funds and protects your constituents' wallets. We ask that this board not opt out of P- of HB five-eight-one. Thank you.
Laura Cole.
Good morning. My name is Laura Cole. I live at nine thirteen Morning Side Drive. I have questions. Is that? Never mind.
Sorry, ma'am. This is just for public comment. There are no questions allowed during this, this portion of the, uh, the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I- if you would come and sit with me afterwards, I'll be more than happy to provide those, those answers. Pod, is it prot, Pratt? Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, Todd Pratt, two-oh-six Maplewood Circle, uh, Griffin, obviously. I wanted to say that you guys have to manage a budget. So does everybody in this room. So does everybody in Spalding County. Um, when my pro- I bought a house in twenty-twenty-one, a new house in, in Griffin, the property taxes, because the value almost doubled, and they were already pretty high before because it's a pretty large house. Um, nobody, I didn't get to go ask somebody else for money to help me with my budget. Um, when you raised it, my mortgage almost doubled. It was quite ridiculous. So I think if we have to manage our own budgets and find ways to, to cut costs and do things in our households, maybe the county should too. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Todd.
Bill Bryant.
Uh, good morning. My name is Bill Brunton. I live at two-eighty-two North Rover Road over in the western part of Spalding County. And thank you for the chance to speak. Um, Commissioner Dutton expressed a lot of my thoughts in the fact of it's a complicated bill. When I first read about it in Griffin Daily News, and Johnny McDaniel said, everyone better do their homework. I said, well, I better read up, and I voted against it, and I still stand behind that vote. It's complicated, like was explained. We might see a lower, a lowering for a while, but if it's tied to the Consumer Price Index, the way costs are rising all over, I like the fact I can come in here and see you guys and talk to you at the state level or at levels above that. It's a lot more difficult. There's a lot more gulf of distance and, um, procedure and what have you. And as I've learned too, promises are easy. There could be new legislation that would help, but there might not be. We've got to go with what's on the book. And I still, uh, would vote against it. Uh, I know I'm in the minority. I don't like taxes any more than anybody else. But it's more complicated. It's more of a burden on a lot of other people, and y'all have got a lot of things to deal with, and I appreciate y'all's attention to detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Brandy Behr. Sorry, please forgive me.
Hello, Brandy Behr, one-thirty-five Bethany Road. Um, I'm just here to say that pretty much what everyone else said, you have taxed us to death, and that's all we do. We have to work and do so much to pay our bu- take care of our budget, take care of our homes and everything else. And everything that Dutton said does sound great, but there's been SPOST in the past that we voted for because it sounded great and thought it would help us and things like that. And those things, some of those things are still on the, on your agenda and have not even been done. Like, some of the things are not even completed from some of those SPOST. And, um, Heritage Park being one of them, since eyebrows are raised. Um, and that goes back to the parks and everything that we don't have for our kids. We're paying these high taxes in property for schools, but our schools are failing. Like, what do we have? What are we getting for these high property taxes that we're paying? You're making, you're forcing, number one, forcing us out because, a lot of people out because of the property taxes. On top of the fact of the inner-city gent- gentrification that you're forcing your residents out. Or the eminent domain for the airport. You're sending all these people out of their homes and then raising the property taxes for the residents that are here now. So I just ask that you think about actual citizens of Griffin that's been here, or Spalding County that's been here. We have roots here. We want to raise our kids here, and think about everything that we're paying, and try to figure out a better way to take that off of our backs.
Thank you, Brandy.
Constance Fallon. Constance?
Okay.
First, thank, thank you, ma'am. Uh, I believe this is, uh, Deborah Turnipseed.
My name is Deborah Turnipseed. I'm at three-fourteen Atkinson Drive. Okay, I heard, uh, the guy mentioned about lowering the taxes and everything. I know the new thing. Um, raising the taxes going forward, that's not a good thing because being here in the city of Griffin as long as I have, cha- my taxes keep going up. I mean, it gets to a point where you can't do anything to your house without, you being taxed more money. And it's hard when a single person, because my husband passed in twenty-seventeen, so it's kind of hard to do the taxes when it's just you, you know? But you look around in the city of Griffin, you see new cars, new bi- new equipment, new thing like the road, the, the sidewalk, all that. We are the one that have to pay for that, as I was told. We need help. We, we live here in this city. We need help. We don't want to be put to a point where we have to force to pay for somebody else's situation. We want to be able to work as a team. Not saying that we gonna listen to us, but it's best to let work together to get things done that would not only help the fire department or whatever, but to help the people here in the city of Griffin as well. Because we all need help. Things are going up now. It's getting higher and higher, and it's getting harder for people to survive. So we all need help. So if y'all are taking into consideration to help us, I mean, to fi- figure out the budget, where the money actually need to go to help the city of Griffin.
Thank you, Deborah.
Mr. Chair, that's all who've signed up this morning.
Do I have a motion to close?
Or close public hearing.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five-zero. At this time, I'd like to ask the county manager, um, to present what we see as the techn- to present what we see as the technical side of how this House bill is going to work, what that looks like specifically. This is not a five-minute presentation. This is a little bit longer than that. I've asked the county manager to speak in terms that Clay Davis fifth grade math works and hopefully we'll be able to all understand as we go through this. All right. Dr. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to take just a few minutes and share with, with you with respect to what I'm seeing from all of the training that we've had the privilege of attending over the course of the last four and a half or five months. ACCG did a great job for us as, as they put together training information for House Bill five eighty-one. In fact, I believe just last year ACCG, ACCG sent representatives down, Dante Handel specifically, to answer some of the questions before we got into the referendum and has since been a wealth of knowledge to put together some material for us to consider for this decision moving forward. In respect to the law, the way that it was written, the inflationary adjustment is for homesteaded property to increase annually. The taxable value of the homesteaded property is to increase annually. What that means specifically is that the valuations for our home will increase just as they have over the course of many, many years. But the exemption that's applied to those valuations for homesteaded properties only. This does not apply to rental properties or businesses. This is for homesteaded properties only. Those exemptions will float from year to year based on the increase of the CPI U. The CPI U is the urbanization of the CPI, so it's basically touching ninety-three percent of America as inflationary standards are applied. So what does that mean for us? It means that the base year that the Department of Revenue will use for the valuations of the home is from two thousand and twenty-four. And as Commissioner Dutton indicated, there has been inflation over the course of the last year and a half that has impacted all of us. I'm a resident here in Spalding County and I don't like paying for goods and services with the increases that we've had any more than any other homeowner here in the county. But from a perspective of managing the resources that our community asks us to provide, the services that our community asks us to provide from a county's perspective, those inflationary values impact us and the cost that it takes to satisfy those services just as if we were a homeowner or a business here in our community. So twenty twenty-four is the base year for how the valuations will be assessed. But we get into a discussion with respect to the law as well because every time someone sells a home, that valuation resets. So talking about uniformity between homes or businesses is going, specifically homes, because this is homesteaded. The, the valuations between homesteaded homes and the cost incurred for the taxation will reset every time you make a home purchase or every time you make a major improvement to your home. So those areas need to be considered as we move forward with the consideration. So as an example of the exemption and how it works, for twenty twenty-four, if a home was assessed at one hundred thousand dollars, in twenty twenty-five, that reassessed value is a hundred and ten. The inflationary adjustment of zero percent, because that's what the Department of Revenue Commissioner has indicated he would use for this year. Then the adjusted base year value is a hundred thousand dollars. So the taxable value is a hundred thousand dollars. So taking into account that the taxes are assessed on a forty percent of that figure, the home would pay two thousand dollars in taxes based on that exemption. For twenty twenty-six, which would be year two, the market value would increase to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, just to use round numbers for this discussion as an example. The inflationary adjustment expected would be two percent. So that would take the adjusted base year value to a hundred and two thousand dollars instead of the one hundred and fifteen thousand. So the exemption value would be thirteen thousand dollars of exemption. This is an exemption, not a revaluation. So the taxable value assessed would be a hundred and two thousand. So the taxes would be assessed against the forty percent of that total number and you would expect to pay roughly two thousand and fifty dollars. If you do the math the other way, there is almost a twenty percent difference in the tax funds that are coming through. But I really want to highlight something on this slide. The net digest for our community is impacted. And that's going to be an important discussion point as we move further along in the discussion and I will show you why as we get to how the taxation is calculated.
Net digest, define that to us.
So the net digest is, so the, the total amount of gross digest, the total amount of assessed value for every property within Spalding County. I can tell you exactly how much that was.
If you're going to get to it later, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Definitely will. The total gross value is three billion, one hundred thirty-seven million, three hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars.
So that's everybody's home basically added together, plus the commercial, all the stuff added together in one big pocket.
That is correct.
Okay.
And then the net digest for last year was two billion, seven sixty-nine, two seventy-two, nine oh three. So the exemptions that apply are already considered for the current way that we do it. But under House Bill five eighty-one, those exemptions would be increased substantially. And that's important as we move along this journey. So the potential impact of House Bill five eighty-one for our twenty-six budget, reduced property tax revenue, that's how that would be impacted, which could result in a slower growth rate. Deferred maintenance would be impacted there with reduced revenue, reduced. Deferred maintenance could include anything from our roads to the cutting of grass, to the, to the other services that we are required to maintain for all of the buildings and all of the assets that our community has in place. It impacts the homestead exemption. And the reason by that is the conversation that Commissioner Dutton shared earlier with respect to the increase in the millage rate to satisfy the same level of revenue required for providing those services. And it's also a shift in the sales tax revenue, which could have a significant reduction in our revenue as well. Who does this impact? Well, regardless of where you are in your journey of life, it has an impact for us. Whether it is an impact for those who are renting homes or businesses that where their rent goes up to satisfy the increased tax burden or whether it has an impact should the, our neighbors vote to include a floating local option sales tax at the cash register, that would be an additional penny for our residents, for us to pay as well as those who visit our community, but it would be an additional penny. It, it does have one positive and I don't want to forego the positive. It does encourage homeownership. Because for those who are homesteaded, it does provide an area of homesteaded exemption that encourages homeownership. So I don't want to lose that portion of the equation. I want to shift gears for just a minute and have a discussion about local option sales tax. This data was derived from the Department of Revenue. I have roughly thirty years worth of month-over-month data. But I would highlight the, the information that you see in front of you with respect to the last two years. In twenty twenty-two, the, the Board of Commissioners for Spalding County and the Board of Commissioners for the city of Griffin negotiated the distribution of local option sales tax. And at that time, we had the discussion about tiering in, creating a tier approach for how much distribution the county would receive over the course of the next five years. We agreed to a half a percentage point increase of revenue allocated to the county that started in twenty twenty-three. I would highlight on the screen that you're seeing here that e- even with the half a percent increase of local option sales tax that the county brought in in twenty twenty-three, there was a reduction in the, the growth rate, the growth rate for the monies that came in in twenty-three. We received another half a percentage point of increase in twenty twenty-four. But we also saw another reduction in the growth rate for twenty twenty-four. To look at this data in a little different way, it indicates that we are seeing a consistent increase in local option sales tax from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. But it also indicates that there seems to be a level of plateau for the amount of local option sales tax that we are receiving as revenue for the community. This local option sales tax indicates for us that we may not be going into a recession. I don't see that we are. I think that i- if I were a betting man, it would be that we've really created a saturation for our community where we've got more residential population than we do commercial or industrial growth within our community. So back to the conversation that Commissioner Dutton was sharing earlier, I, I do see an opportunity for us to continue the commercial and industrial growth within our community to support and help us reduce our tax burden for property taxes. So I want to share with you some other data that your staff has been pulling together for the last few months. The total number of parcels in Spalding County is thirty-three thousand, three forty-four. Those, the, the, of those thirty-three, three forty-four, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixteen of those parcels are residential parcels. The total number of homesteaded parcels within the community is thirteen thousand, eight twenty-eight and non-homesteaded parcels are eleven thousand, two fifty-two. What we derive from this is that the non-homesteaded parcels within the community is forty-five percent. That's not to suggest that we've got a forty-five percent rental rate. There are, what we have located in the data is that there are a number of houses that are just not homesteaded. The individuals have not homesteaded those properties, but this is their primary residence. Also, we have homes within the community that are second homes. So those two are not homesteaded. The homestead properties are outside of this jurisdiction. But there are thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight that are homesteaded. Of those thirteen thousand, eight twenty-eight that are homesteaded, that accounts for forty-one point five percent of our total taxable digest. So forty-one point five percent of our homesteaded property, sorry, forty-one point five percent of our total taxable digest come from, from these properties, from these homesteaded properties. What has been the average yearly inflationary increase? Eight point six five percent is the inflationary increase for residential properties. This comes directly from our Board of Assessors. And what you're seeing with respect to the increase at the bottom of the five-year tax levy with respect to the seventeen point four or last year, the, the seven and some change, please forgive me, I'll give you that number specifically. It, it doesn't just include seven point two last year. It doesn't just include that, or it doesn't just suggest that seven point two percent increase was what I saw on my tax bill. It means that there was seven point two percent increase in the, the amount of taxes that were brought in in four point five percent I saw on my tax bill. The other three percent was the increase in the number of parcels that were built, new homes, new businesses, or had some type of a major improvement on their property. So the, the amount of increase at seven point two was not felt by all of our property owners. One of the other things that I would ask you to consider is that we have about a ten percent turnover rate within our community every year. So about ten percent of our residents, whether they are homesteaded or not homesteaded, actually leave and go someplace else and we have new people coming in. So it's about a ten percent turnover rate year over year. I also want to highlight the school tax. This board is not responsible for school taxes. This, the Board of Education is solely responsible for the increase in the taxation for the school tax. This board is responsible for our general maintenance and operation budget and our fire district tax. That's the, the two that impact me the most as a homeowner. But for those who are, who are eligible, who are sixty-five to sixty-nine years of age, there are one thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight of those residents who do receive, should they file the proper paperwork with the tax commissioner, they do receive an additional exemption for their school tax. For those who are seventy to seventy-four, there are fifteen hundred and eighty-three of these residents who receive an additional school tax. And for seventy-five and older, there are two thousand, seven hundred and eighty of those who receive an additional exemption from their school tax.
Dr. Ledbetter, that's an addition to the normal homestead exemption, right?
That is correct.
How do they, how do they file for that?
Uh, there's paperwork that the tax commissioner can afford them and all they need to do is just file the paperwork and, and submit it.
So that, that's down there at the, the tag office?
That is correct. Just one block down the street, i- if they will go to that location and file the paperwork. For sixty-five to sixty-nine, it's a ten thousand additional exemption. For seventy to seventy-four, it's a twenty thousand additional exemption. And for seventy-five and older, there is an additional thirty thousand dollar exemption for school taxes that we, we have. Now, I do want to highlight the fact that that's five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one exemptions. So those within our community who are filing homestead, it, it's basically a little more than a third, it's about, well, forty-two percent, according to the bottom of this screen. Forty-two percent of our community who are homesteaded are sixty-five and above and who are eligible for those additional exemptions. So property tax, millage rates. So I pulled this directly from the Department of Revenue's website and it provides you with a very detailed perspective of how millage rate is derived. But I'd like to break it down just a little bit farther. So net digest times millage rate equals the amount of revenue that our county receives annually. So it is a math equation. So if our net digest is reduced in order to maintain the same level of revenue to provide the services that our community is asking us to provide, then the millage rate must be increased. Conversely, if the net digest is increased, then net milli- sorry, then millage rate can be decreased in order to satisfy the same level of services that we are asked to provide. But your staff did something a little bit different with respect to House Bill five eighty-one. We built a model that used the information for House Bill five eighty-one and highlighted the three areas of opportunity. So opting out, House Bill, opting in with the PLOST and opting in without the PLOST should our neighbors vote in opposition to adding the penny at the register. Some of the things that we wanted to consider as we built the model was how do we maintain consistency and show this in a way that consistency and show this in a way that is matching apples for apples? So the assumptions that we put into play are a 2.5%, sorry, maintaining the same number of employees, so not increasing employees at all, maintaining a 2.5% increase in our pay, and then creating the same level of annualized growth at 5.6% that we've seen over the course of the last five years. If we use those three assumptions as the baseline for every year, looking at the model, I will let you draw conclusions to what you're seeing. But what I see is that maintaining the opt-out option actually reduces the millage rate year over year. If we opt in but not vote in the FLOST, then the millage rate becomes consistent, but at almost five mils more than if we had opted out. If we opt in and vote the FLOST in, then in 2027, we are afforded the opportunity to use the one cent sales tax to offset our property taxes, and it drops the millage rate to 12.556. But year over year afterwards, that millage rate continues to go up. This is including an increase to our local option sales tax that we've seen over the course of the last three years as an assumption, and that increase is 3.1% year over year. So we went very, very conservative with the numbers that we put in, and we maintained consistency across all three options with our assumptions.
Dr. Ledbetter, let me make sure I understand this. What you're saying to us is to get to the lowest millage rate, we need to opt out?
I am here to present the facts to you, sir, and from the information that we can derive, yes, sir, that does seem to be the best option for our community. This is making an assumption that we do not increase any of our services nor add additional people. Should we add people or add services, all three of these millage rates grow exponentially. One of the things that we did inside of our model was we added a few, not many, less than five, people for the growth that we expect over the next few years, and the opt-in option without the FLOST took the, took the millage rate to 17.89. I, I was shocked at how the model was built, i- in a way that highlights this level of detail. We're not just looking at next year. We're looking at three, five, seven years downrange so that we can make sure that we're sharing with this board and our community the best option for Spalding County.
As I hope everybody can kind of look and see, this is not an easy, oh, why not just do what, what the voter said? I'm not too sure that the voters understood it will increase your taxes. Okay? All right. Thank you, Dr. Ledbetter. Please continue.
I do have the last few years, the last five years, as a matter of fact, our tax levy. Staff is reviewing the budget as it stands right now in preparation for presenting it to the Board of Commissioners within the next 45 days. And we want to make sure that we are looking not just at today, but tomorrow as well. But we do see the opportunity for our community to lower, slightly lower, should the board stay in, because I can't prepare this for you, should we move into House Bill, should we opt into House Bill 581 because of the changes? I can't prepare that yet because we've not been briefed on what the, the numbers are going to look like should, should we opt in. But should we opt out, it does appear that we can lower, slightly lower our millage rate again this year. But I do want to highlight that in 2022, 16.138, and 23, it was 15.588, and in 24, it was 15.500. So we would suggest that if we opt out, if the board decides to opt out, that we could lower it from the 15.500 slightly. Some of the other things that we as a staff wanted to review as we prepared for this discussion was, are there other states across the country that are utilizing a similar legislation such as House Bill 581? There are three. California's Proposition 13, Florida's Save Our Homes Amendment, and then the Texas Property Tax Reform. We did a cursory review of each of those. They've all got their pros and cons. I'm sure many of us have an opinion on each of them, but we just wanted to make sure that we were understanding what impacts or potholes we should anticipate should we move forward with House Bill 581. And that was our cursory, sorry, that was not, I went past that one. This is a special tax district impact. Are our special tax districts impacted? The answer is yes, they are. The statewide floating homestead exemption only applies to the, the, for, for floating local option sales tax, it only applies to the general fund maintenance and operation budget. So our special tax districts are not afforded the opportunity to take in any of the funding from that one cent at the register. The one area that I see that this would be impactful for us is our fire district tax. So it would impact fire district tax. So the reduction in the net digest would require an increase in our fire district tax as well to maintain that same level of, of revenue. One of the things that I would ask us to consider is that by county ordinance, our fire district tax will only allow us to increase to a maximum of five mils. We would be very, very close to that five mil max, should we opt in because of the reduction in revenue based on the, the exemptions that would be imposed. Two things in conclusion. We are indicating that we are considering the opt-out option. The reason for that is we are on a very tight timeline, and we want to make sure that we give our Board of Commissioners ample time to make a, an informed decision on whether or not we should opt in or opt out. This is our first of three public hearings. Today is February the 12th. We started this public hearing at 10 o'clock. We will again speak this evening at 6 o'clock with our public hearing, and the final public hearing will be Monday, February the 17th at 6:00 PM. We would encourage all of our neighbors to come and participate in those public hearings. And then finally, I do want to highlight the fact that we are in the middle of our budget process. The consideration before this board with respect to opting in or opting out will impact our budget for next fiscal year, which begins in July. So as we move forward, we would ask you to think and consider this option very carefully as we move forward. With that being said, that is my presentation this afternoon, or this morning, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Steve, am I correct in assuming that if we choose to opt out, we don't get to vote, to have a FLOST?
We would not be eligible for a FLOST, for a floating local option sales tax.
That only goes with the opting in.
That, that is correct. Yes, ma'am. There are other options that staff would ask you to consider, and they could range from offering the opportunity for our neighbors to vote and consider a SPOLOST that would afford us the opportunity to include debt reduction in the SPOLOST that could be designated specifically for millage rate reduction, which would be, from, from my vantage point, it would be a hybrid from House Bill 581, but would afford us the opportunity to garner some level of consideration for millage rate reduction, tax reduction for property tax.
So we could, if, if we opted out, we could possibly have a tax reduction over several years under a SPOLOST?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I wanted to, someone had made a comment about the City of Griffin. I just want people to understand that the City of Griffin has their own option, opt-in or opt-out options, and it's, it's like comparing apples to oranges, because seven, only 7% of the city's cost come from property taxes. Everything else comes from water, sewer. So they have a stream of revenue that is outside of taxes. So it's kind of hard to compare what they're doing to us, because clearly whatever happens in the county will affect the city, but they don't have that tax burden on them like we do. I think someone had mentioned that they were afraid to do something to their house because they thought that their property value will go up. And I think we need to assure them that it's only based on square footage if your property value changes. It doesn't matter if you put a fireplace in or a den or, or whatever, it's only going to depend on whether or not the value of your house. Explain to me.
Actually, that is, the, the value can change based on a substantial change in the property. So the, the law doesn't actually define substantial change. So actually, that will be something that the Boards of Assessors of the various counties will have to address as to what they believe is a substantial change. It's easy for them to, to, to look at things that are permitted. So of course, if you add an outbuilding or a pool or a detached garage, anything that you have appropriately permitted for, then they're going to, to know about, the, the tax assessors will know about that. It will be more difficult for interior things, especially if things are not done using a permitting process.
So, so I understand that the property value will go up if the assessment goes up, which is outside of our, our wheel well.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but I also understand that if I put granite cabinets in my house, how does anybody know that? If I put tile floor down in my house, how does anybody know that? So, so yes, I hear what you're saying, but in general, just fixing your house up on the inside is not going to generate.
That's correct, because it is much more difficult for, for appraisers in the chief appraisers office to know what that is.
I also wanted to share one thing, because I was here when it happened. At one point, the members of this board were aware of the fact that we had very many substandard housing, houses in Spalding County. And at one point, the thought process on this board, and none of you guys were here, was that if we get bigger houses, more square footage, we can get more property tax. Well, that did not work, because all we ended up getting were a bunch of big boxes that basically had no value and didn't really bring any real value to the community. But we did that, I can almost say, for about 10 years. And of course, hindsight is 2020, that we know now that industrial should be what was setting that off. So that's what put us so far behind everyone else. And when I say everyone else, I mean in our region, because we were operating under the assumption if we got more expensive houses and larger houses, we would get more taxes to be able to run the county instead of the opposite. So as a small explanation as to how we got in this situation where we are basically funding the community with residential property taxes, that, that's how we got here. The question is, how do we get away from here? And everybody keeps saying economic development, but you all know, like I do, you have to invest money in order to provide sewer, provide water. And on a regular basis, when these things happen, there are, there's always those individuals who are going to be harmed. I wouldn't want something in my backyard. I would expect that you would expect that I would show up and completely go ballistic because it was in my backyard. And we're aware of that, but the cost of growth, there is always a cost of growth. So I don't know that we have the answer yet to promote economic development, but I cringe a little when I, when I hear you say, if we're not funding it now in order for us to move forward, we can't spend any money for economic development. If we want to do that, just so people can know, as a, a state entity, we are not required to fund the senior center, meals on wheels, the road deputies from the sheriff's department, the aquatic center, parks and leisure services, code enforcement, animal control, planning and development, grass cutting, the library, trash collection sites, fire and EMS. I mean, you pick it. It's different for everybody. If you have kids, it's important for you to be, for them to be able to play T-ball. If you get up every day and you go to the senior center to have a meal and to socialize, that's important to you. So it's really hard, when I hear people say to us, you need to cut stuff, whose stuff do I cut? Whose stuff is more important than the other? Because technically, these are services that we have been asked to provide, and we've tried to provide them at the level that people want. But understand, to say that we need to budget like we budget at home, at home, you your own boss. You can decide what you want to do. Up here, there's five different brains, plus management, plus the citizenry, and we do everything that we can to dig into the evidence to, to make the best decisions. I feel like that's why people elected us, because they trust our judgment. But this is not, this is a complicated problem. And because of the fact that there are not enough details to clarify us, I have to stand on the point that we in Spalding County need to be the own deter, our own determiners of our destiny. If we screw it up, let it be because we screwed it up, not because we followed the direction of what someone in the legislature who doesn't really even live here decided to do. So, so I challenge people, if you want us to reduce our budget, figure out these things, what we need to do with these things that we're not supposed to fund, and understand that it will probably have to be across the board, if, if that happens. For me, the short answer is economic development, but the funding of that is, is another thing altogether. How do you make that happen without having to spend money? On the other hand, I am very much not surprised, but kind of glad to know that there is an option for property tax reduction outside of this option. You know, I, I just think that if there is an opportunity for us to find a sustainable way to reduce the millage rate, then that should be the way that we go so that we have control of it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Now, if we opt out, taxes goes down, and if we opt in, can you explain that again for me, though?
Yes, sir. So for fiscal year '26, the millage rate would need to increase because our net digest would decrease. And if you remember... Yep, these, these two slides here. If night, if net digest is decreased, then our millage rate would need to increase. And then if you look at the numbers for our millage rate as the model indicates over the, from now until 2037, we do see a reduction in millage rate should our voters agree to, by referendum, to vote for a FLOST. But those numbers only hold true for approximately two years before the millage rate crossline hits and starts to outpace the opt-out option. Thank you.
Commissioner Bolden?
My thoughts on the House Bill 581, I think it was extremely rushed in the beginning. They put a couple of catchy lines on the ballot, like one of the speakers, Mr. Bryant, said. I did a little research in the beginning. I talked to several of the co-authors, and I have since heard probably five different versions and stories, and every time we talk to them, they, they bring up, well, we're going to change some legislation, we're going to, we're going to kind of clean it up on the backside. So if it's not set in stone, I, I just don't feel right about it. I foresee Steve's idea working out better in the long run as of now. Again, I'm going to continue to talk to several of the co-writers and just see if anything has changed or just get kind of a feel on the new legislation that's cleaning these bills up, if it's really going to push forward or not. And I think on the 17th, the last night, don't we have one of the speakers coming?
We actually do. Representative Beth Camp and Representative Karen Mathiak will both be here on Monday night.
I think House Bill 581 has a good idea behind it, in my idea. I think the governor and the legislators want to try to set a way that homeowners can understand what their taxes are going to be year over year over year. That's a good thing, because right now, it facilitates huge numbers depending on what inflation fair market value turns out to be. The other side of that coin, as you've listened to Dr. Ledbetter talk, the millage rate has stayed pretty stagnant, give or take a half a mil or something like that, a mil, it has stayed so. If we turn around and do it the other way, your homesteaded homes taxes, you'll understand exactly what they are. They'll stay pretty well. The opposite is going to happen with our millage rate. We will have, because of inflation, huge swings up and down as the inflation goes and happens. So it's one where, I think the idea is a good one, not quite sure that we have the exact right model yet. It'll be interesting to have Representative Camp and Mathiak here on when we get ready to talk to us before we get ready to vote. But like the county manager says, please don't hesitate to come, speak this afternoon, this evening, or again on the 17th to be able to do it. This is a listening session for us. This is a complicated issue. This is not simple stuff to be able to say. Taxes go up, taxes go down, it's a little more complicated than that. All right?
I would like for people to be able to, to email us to ask questions, but I would prefer that any questions to me be directed at the county manager, because, yeah, I'm just learning about this too. And I feel like the message that we're trying to understand here needs to be a professional answer. So I'm not trying to stick people on you, but I think for, like, the one lady that you asked to come and speak with you afterwards, because people don't know when they come here that there's not a back and forth discussion. And so people, if they have, you have other questions based on what you heard today, by all means, get a card and email Steve and...
You can do that on the website to be able to do it.
He'll be able to answer you.
Pretty quickly. You just go there, says it, you can write a comment to him, he will answer you pretty quickly on it. This is exactly right. Thank you, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor. All right, anything else from you?
Yes, sir.
Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, and that is that if you do decide to opt out, there is still the opportunity to work with your, with our local legislative delegation to craft a floating homestead that is actually appropriate for our constituents.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Would that be local legislation?
It would be, yes, ma'am.
Which would offset the state?
The House Bill 581, actually, it doesn't, you may have heard it called an opt-back-in, but it's not, there is no option to opt back in to 581, but there is the option to help craft local legislation that creates a floating homestead. And if you do create a floating homestead, it doesn't have to be exactly like 581, but that does create the eligibility for a floss at a later date.
And that's a pretty quick turnaround if we're trying to do it this year. I think Representative Camp says by mid-March, she has to have that legislation in front of her if we're going to enact it this time. So that is pretty quick on what do we want it to change into, and that's a whole bill issue for us to be able to do that. So that's pretty quick for us to be...
It could be in the next session, though, it doesn't, you're not required to do it this legislative session.
So it wouldn't happen this time, but it could happen next time. All right, citizen engagement, deputy, okay, deputy county manager? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it.